It's four o'clock. I look at your preliminary instructions. The meeting's coming to order. If you want to chat, click chat or type your question. You don't have to wait. You can ask questions at any time. Primarily for folks, it'll be addressed during the public comments section near the end. If you're on the telephone, you can hit star nine to let the host know that you're, that you want to speak. I guess that's it, correct?
State your name.
Oh, and when you speak, please state your name. So we know who you are, especially if you're on the telephone. All right, thank you. We had kind of a long meeting this afternoon. I'd like to welcome Chan and Greg and others that are joining us also. We do have a long meeting because we have a number of things to go on. Gentlemen, I'm going to turn number two. I called the meeting to order. That was one. Number two, I'm going to turn over to Greg. What it is, is I want Greg to change or to revise minutes from June 4th. So Greg, I'm going to turn it over to you, please.
Thank you, Jay. Yes, item four on the previous meeting of June 4th should have been to authorize the purchase of Lucas chest compression systems, four of them, at a cost not to exceed $70,000. It was another, an earlier price quote somehow got put in there, but they, but they get the full system. That's, it's going to be right up to the, to, close to the $70,000, which is in the, which is the amount in the line item. So I move that we approve the Lucas chest compression systems at a cost not to exceed $70,000, which is in the line item in the CNR budget sheet.
Okay, I would second that. Chan?
On board.
Okay, okay, unanimous.
And then just for the record, so that, this is equipment for the fire department and EMS rescue.
Right, and that's also to, I had that in another area. It's going, it's, it is the three fire departments, but it's the Woodstock
Fire Protection Association.
Fire Protection Association, which covers all three departments plus EMS.
Gotcha. That's correct.
This, this particular motion is just to approve the minutes as amended. We'll get to the actual approval of the purchase later on in the agenda.
Okay, did you all catch that?
Yep.
That's just a revision. We'll get to the actual approval of spending later. Okay. Thanks, Greg.
So, so we've voted. We're all good. Okay.
We want to approve the minutes of July 16th, regular Board of Selectmen's meeting. There's a revision, item two. And number two is approve the minutes of July 16th, regular Selectmen's meeting. What that actually is, is we're revising that to amend the minutes from July 2nd.
Correct.
So all in favor?
Uh, that, that has to be revised yet again.
All right.
You can, you can.
Page, on the 16th, I'm sorry, on the 16th, under number two, it was stated, Selectman Greg Klein stated his draft Black Lives Matter statement should be included in the minutes. That title is actually Greg's statement speaking out against racism and social injustice. It was not titled Black Lives Matter. However, as part of the draft, that statement or those words, Black Lives Matter, was included. So when the minutes came out, it said Black Lives Matter. That was not the statement. The statement was speaking out against racism and social injustice.
Racial injustice, yeah. Okay, that's good, fine. That's fine, yeah.
Right, so anyway, are we in favor of that revision?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and with that change, is there anything else to change in that, in those minutes?
No, I think it was just those two things, the date and what was described. And I'm just flipping through them here, Greg. What was described is your statement.
Yeah.
Other than that, I believe they're correct.
Right, so I, I vote yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Unanimous. Number four, consider the appointment of Crystal Adams as Conservation Commission representative to the Open Space Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee for the term retroactive to January 27, 2019 through November 16, 2021. Actually, the way this is typed, I believe it would be not from, you wouldn't go retroactive appointment. So I think it would be from today, today's date, through November 16, 2021.
Yep, okay. That's the date, that's the date that the term ends, so.
Yes.
Yeah, fine. I, I agree with that. I second, I'll second that.
Yep.
Okay. All right, unanimous. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, number five. Approve year-end transfers. I'm not going to go through the details. I've got documents here which you wouldn't believe. I'm not going to go through all the details, but I'm going to give you a synopsis about what it says. This is from Karen Fitzpatrick to me dated today. Anyway, this is spreadsheets and the CNR transfer request for review and approval of this board today. $212,483 CNR account for Woodstock Academy capital assessment. And this is installment number two. Do you want to do them total? Do you want me to go through all four?
Do them all.
Do you want to do it separately? Separately? Okay, so what is your pleasure on approving the year-end transfer of that amount of money for Woodstock Academy capital assessment?
So moved? You, you, what did you say? I didn't hear you.
Uh, no, I was going to do these separately. The first one, Greg, is $212,483 CNR account for the Woodstock Academy capital assessment, which is installment number two on what we had previously agreed to pay to the academy.
Okay, I'm good.
Yep, I'm board.
And I also, okay. The second item is $17,000 CNR account for the Lucas compression machines for the Woodstock Fire Protection Association.
So moved? Second.
Okay, unanimous. The third item is $100,000 CNR account for town hall generator replacement.
What?
What it is, is we had problems during the last storm with the town hall generator where it was not large enough to take care of the whole building. That was part of the problem. When the generator was installed, we didn't have the number of computers that we have now. Some of the computers were not working. Most of the phones were not working. We could accept calls on one or two lines, but we could not make calls out. So we have made a determination in what we're asking right now. And this is to, for us to approve. It'll have to go to Board of Finance, but it's for $100,000 to replace the town hall generator based on what the requirements are in 2020 here at the town hall.
So the generator is just not large enough to handle the whole building, is that correct? Or it's just not, or it's in need of repair and not worth repairing?
No, it's actually, it's, it's in very good shape, to the point that we may use it elsewhere in town, but it's not large enough to handle the requirements of this building. Part of that problem is, as I said, we did not have the number of computers that we have and are required to have now when the building was first built and that generator was installed.
Okay.
I'll make that a motion.
Is, is there a line item in the, in the CNR budget sheet for this specific thing? Or is it just for town hall?
No.
There is no line item, no.
It does not have to be a line item on there. The, the reason for the capital plan basically is, you know, a wish list of needs for future projects for the town that we don't normally budget for. And also for loss of reimbursement in order to get reimbursed for specific projects, they have to be on that capital plan. But if this is a capital project, it can still be, it will still qualify for using funds from the capital and non-recurring account.
Is there any chance that there could be, there could be funds available from FEMA or for, you know?
It's not, it's not related to COVID or the storm. I don't, I don't think that we, you know. We are, in answer to FEMA, we are in the process, and we've been doing this since the COVID situation occurred early this spring, but we are tracking expenses directly related to either COVID or the storm. But yeah, I couldn't, I, I, I just couldn't justify the, the generator as being related to either.
Now, if the, if the amount is 100,000, then we're going to town vote?
We would not have to do that only because this may be set aside for possibly next year in the sense that we may not replace it this year. This money would be set aside and earmarked for replacement of the, of the generator.
Um, Chan, to answer your question, yes. Eventually, when they're ready to expend that money, if it's approved by the Board of Finance, then yes, it would have to go to a town meeting and possible referendum, depending if it's over 100,000. We, we actually, the, the cost could even be more, but we're not 100% sure because we're still waiting for quotes. We have to have the building evaluated. So for now, we just want to put it in like a savings and earmark that money and then hopefully we could do it if it's under 100,000 sometime in this fiscal year. But if not, we may need to put more money next fiscal year to actually get it done. I think there's a lot more, there's a lot of details in order to replace that generator that we don't have in, you know, in paper, black and white, yet we're still waiting for. So when the time comes and we're ready to do the actual replacement and we know exactly what the cost will be, then yes, we'll have to do a town meeting and a referendum. If it's over 100,000.
Which, Chan, again, we don't know when, when that might occur. We had talked to Rich Roberts earlier this week about, it was a, I believe there were nine items on a list that we had that traditionally would go to a referendum and/or a town meeting. And we were trying to determine what was considered an emergency and what could wait. And that was, and, and we met with him and we determined there were a number of things that would be considered, quote unquote, emergency, that could go through under executive orders. But there were other things that we couldn't in good conscience go through without going to town meeting. And again, we don't know what the future's going to hold, so that's, that's where we're at.
Okay.
And Chan, the other thing is, this is money that we have available now that if, if it came out to 120,000, again, we don't have firm numbers. We could, in effect, put this way, kind of like a rainy day fund, earmark it for a new generator and, and not spend it now. But the other thing is, we wanted to get this squared away so that our approval could go to Board of Finance when they meet in September 8th, I believe.
Okay, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, and Greg, are you okay with that, the generator?
Yes.
Okay, so unanimous. All right, the last item is $42,961.08 and that's CNR account for emergency tree removal fiscal 2021. What this is basically would be going to Public Works Department to either enhance what they have now or allow them to hire outside contractors to come into town to take care of trees. You know, both of you, actually anybody that's listening in, the issues we had during the storm with trees and the power company, et cetera, et cetera. Even though the power company has had other private contractors in town for a long time dealing with trees, trees are still a major concern of John Navarro and company. So that's why we wanted to take that money and set it aside to be used for emergency tree removal.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so unanimous. All right. We want to approve use of CNR funds, this is number six, for the second installment of the Woodstock Academy capital project in the amount of $212,483, $212,483. This is under Executive Order 7S7. And what this is, if you will, is we just approved the four items that we, it was money from last fiscal year that we just approved that will go into the new fiscal year for issues or things that need to be addressed now. What we're doing now, some of these are the same, but we're doing it under Executive Order 7S.7, which basically means we don't have to go to a town meeting or referendum. So that's number six on your, on your agenda.
That, that is a, an obligation of, of the town, we know. But I, I was under the impression that anything that could, didn't have to go to a, to a town meeting would be considered to be health or public safety. And that, and that's public education or, and.
Or it could also be less than 1% of your actual general government budget combined. So this would qualify because it's under 1% of the total government budget, which is over $24 million. At least that's what we understood from our town attorney.
And that was earlier this week.
What, Jay?
That, we met with Rich Roberts earlier this week and this was one of the questions that came up.
Right, okay.
So if it's less than 1% of the total budget, there's no need to go under, under that Executive Order 7S7. There's no need to go to town meeting or referendum.
In case you had questions.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's Rich Roberts. I'm on the call in case you had.
Greg, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, that, the difference is that for transfers and special appropriations under 1% of the, the annual combined budget, you don't need to make a finding of emergency. It's just something that Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance are jointly empowered to do under that executive order.
Now, is this figure the original figure? Because I know at one point they talked about the second installment being adjusted because of the number of students.
Yes, actually, we had talked about that while we were with Rich Roberts and I, I believe both Mike Dougherty and Jay agreed to go with the original amount that was proposed last fiscal year because it was a, it was a quote proposed to the town for one specific project and they told us we would have two years to pay for it. So the first installment was $212,483 and this year, the second installment should be $212,483 because the project was approved with the current students at that time.
Correct.
The, the payments were two equal payments.
Right.
So that's what we're doing. Are you gentlemen in agreement or?
Uh, yeah, given how I stand on this, I'm not happy about having to do it, but we do. So I'll, I'll vote yes.
Greg?
I vote affirmatively yes.
Okay, and I, I, I vote affirmatively, but with reservation, as Chan said. Nobody likes it, but we got to do it.
There's a message, there's a message on here from Megan, board.
A message?
Yeah, on the, oh, it just went away, from Megan Bard Morse, I don't know.
We can wait for public input.
Okay, Megan, I think we're going to wait for, for public, can we? Thank you. All right, number seven, approve use of CNR funds for the purchase of the Lucas compression machines for the Woodstock Fire Protection Association in the amount up to $70,000, again, under Executive Order 7S7. And again, this comes under, Greg, you had brought it up, this comes under health and safety.
Right, so I, I, I move we approve that.
Okay, Chan?
Yes.
Okay, so unanimous.
Now, question, question, now, does, this could be, this can, does not need to go to a town meeting. So does it need to go to the Board of Finance for the Board of Finance to again approve it?
Yes, we, the thing is, it, it, it's health and safety and under the governance Executive Order 7S7, it's okay, no town meeting. But it does have to go, we are recommending it to the Board of Finance. So it will be going into their meeting on September 8th. And then after September 8th, if approved, and we have every reason to believe it will be approved, the purchase can be made.
Okay, I don't want to slow this up anymore, but they already did approve it.
Because Greg, what happens with CNR? So with, with CNR, the Board of Finance approves the transfer from the general fund into the capital non-recurring reserve fund. But it's a statute that any expenditures still have to go to town meeting to be approved to, to actually spend the money. In this case, if it's over 100,000, again, it would then go to a referendum. But because Executive Order 7S7 states, because of all the COVID, that we don't have to go to town meeting and referendum to approve this. We're hoping that the Board of Finance will approve it at their September 8th meeting so we don't have to delay it any further.
That, that's hope.
Okay, so we're all, we're all set on that. Number.
Eight.
Number eight, to approve use of CNR funds in the amount of $52,838.07 and $0.71 for upgrades to Lebanon Hill Road Phase 1. And again, this is under Executive Order 7S7. There were a number of upgrades to various roads in town that were already planned. And again, because of, there were delays because of COVID, because of people staying home to protect them, protect their health and this sort of thing. So there's been a lot of delays. So anyway, this would, would be recommended, again, to Board of Finance for the upgrade to Lebanon Hill Road.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Number nine is approval of CNR funds in the amount.
I'm sorry, I interrupted. You have to add it to the agenda and we haven't done that yet.
It's 9A, Doug.
But don't you have to add it to the agenda before you start the meeting?
I think you're right, so we will, after we're done with that. Excuse us, little technical difficulty. Number nine, approve use of CNR funds in the amount of $52,838.07.07 for the upgrades to English Neighborhood Road Phase 3 under Executive Order 7S7, which basically is, is the same as the Lebanon Hill.
So moved? Second.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Now, at this point, I would like to add, which showed up on my agenda, but unfortunately not on yours, number 9A. And what that is, is to approve use of CNR funds in the amount of $42,961.08 for emergency tree removal fiscal year 2021. And again, this is under Executive Order 7S7. So it's very similar to the upgrades on the roads, the Lucas compression machines, et cetera, et cetera, under that executive order. The reason for the delay, and it's not on your copy, is we just found out what the exact amount was going to be. And as we mentioned earlier, when we were doing the recommendations for end of year to Board of Finance, the emergency tree removal was on that list. So I'm adding it to our agenda.
I, I motion that we, that we approve it.
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. So 9A is unanimous.
Cut them down.
Okay, number 10.
Oh, look at that, you're just approving, putting it on the agenda. Why do you go approve the motion?
Ah, okay. So. I, I'm sorry, I am remiss, but I was just corrected. What we just voted on was to add it to the agenda as 9A. Now I have to read it again and we will vote on whether or not to do it. So we, we voted to put it on the agenda and it's now there.
So moved.
So moved, to approve?
Yes, sir.
All right, see, these guys don't fool around. Let's make that unanimous. Christine, can I go to number 10? Thank you.
Cut them down.
All right, now, gentlemen, we're going to recommend to the Board of Finance to approve items 6, 7, 8, 9, and 9A under Executive Order 7S7.
So moved, so moved.
Okay, unanimous, thank you. Okay. Tax rebates, we haven't had them in a while, but we have them now. Tax rebate. Number one is a rebate to Martin H. and Marna G. Marasco in the amount of $99. And number two is a tax rebate to Toyota Lease Trust in the amount of $71.17.
Make a motion to approve the tax rebate, says Greg.
Second.
Okay, great, thank you. Boy, we got correspondence. Okay, we, Chan, Greg and I, we were copied on a letter from Rachel Bottel to Jeff Gordon. And it basically, it's a lady that lives in the area of the proposed gas station in West Woodstock. And she listed her concerns about sightlines and having gas there and the number of gas tanks and that sort of thing. Basically, it's just an FYI for us. It's basically in the hands of the Planning and Zoning Commission. But I just want to acknowledge in our minutes that Ms. Donalds led it to us, was received and acknowledged. Okay, this, this is, well, it's sad, but it's life. August 18th, 2020, this was to me and to Judy Wahlberg. Please be advised effective August 31st, 2020, I am resigning as Democratic Registrar of Voters. My deputy, Catlin Cupley, has agreed to become the new Democratic Registrar effective September 1st, 2020. At that time, I will become the deputy. It's been a privilege to serve in this capacity for the last 12 years. I've enjoyed working with the staff at town hall and appreciate all the help and support that has been given to me by the town clerk, the selectmen, the constables, the treasurer's office, the administrative staff, especially the custodian. I wish you all continued success in serving our town. Sincerely, Suzanne Woodward. I have a letter, July 6th, from Ann Miller, Executive Director and T, to the resident. uh, to the residents of Towne Woodstock, thanking us for our contribution to Food Items Fatigued School Programs, explaining that how they are distributed to the community, and they're just very appreciative. And she said, little personal note, thank you for helping us keep our shelves stocked and our neighbors fed, we're truly grateful. Um, I've got two reports from the state police for the month of June and the month of July. Um, June, I think, I believe we already covered, no, we had a meeting that we missed. Basically, I'm gonna give you the latest one, accidents, there were three, investigations, 16, no burglaries, no larceny, I'm sorry, one larceny, non-reportable matters, 81. In addition to the above investigations, troopers conducted the following motor vehicle enforcement, no DUIs, two traffic citations, and three written warnings. Um, we had an update from George McCoy, uh, going back to late July, and then was another one came in August 15th. He, they're moving along, you know, we're slow to start, this is the Woodstock Safety Patrol. He has been working with Sergeant Hagland out of Troop D. They send them a courtesy notice on what hours and days they're gonna be patrolling, a description of the vehicle and who's in the vehicle. He gave me the, the roads they've been patrolling and the hours. Um, they've had assistance from others that are coming aboard to help with new volunteer orientation. They are having monthly business and training meetings for the volunteers. Uh, they have patrol tactics being given by a retired state trooper and veteran. They've been keeping in contact with Sergeant Hagland and Troop D. They have had additional members get involved. They wanted to thank Jeff Gordon, he agreed to assist them, providing hats to the members of this patrol. Um, they have had a good relationship with folks in the community, Troop D, and Town Hall. They also are in the process, I'm not sure you have those, no, they're in the process with one of their new members of becoming, I believe, a nonprofit organization, so they can accept donations where people can write off on their taxes. So, they're very active and it's been going well.
Sounds like they're doing it the right way.
Yeah, yeah, they're taking it slow and easy, and you know, again, I've heard good things from folks in the community.
Any note from them about any, any activities that they've uncovered?
Uh, not especially, they seem to think that just by being, by patrolling the individuals they might be looking for perhaps seeing the vehicle, it may not do what they were intending to do.
That's a good answer.
I don't know, but as far as I know, no, there has not been anything that they've come upon, you know, that sort of thing. I think the other thing is, word has gotten out that there are people that are out riding around and keeping an eye out for neighbors. You know, it's the old story, in, in the old days, you'd look out for your neighbor's house, you know, that sort of thing. I also think that people are getting smarter, because I found that when I was working with out in the Lakes District with the executive committees out there, and I was talking about do's and don'ts, you know, in a sense, and don't leave your keys in the car, lock your cars, don't leave your laptop on the backseat. It's wonderful, you and your family went to Disney World, but wait till you get home to post the pictures, not while you're in Disney World. So, I think folks in town have gotten smarter about themselves, but I think also looking out for their neighbors. I do know that I've talked to some folks that have gone on vacation, where they're, you know, I've made suggestions about timers on lights, so that the lights go on in the kitchen and the living room, and then they go off a certain time, if the light goes on in the bedroom or on the second floor for two hours from 10 to midnight. And I think more and more people are, are using common sense. And I think that's helping too.
That's good.
Um, just under correspondence, um, one of the things we had done, and gentlemen, you already knew about this, because you signed off on it. Um, we had chosen JP Morgan as a company to refinance an existing 2010 bond. And the, the key for us is it was a 20-year bond, we've already paid on it for 10 years. But we went from the original, if, if the original bond went from 2% to 10%. Huh?
2% to 4%.
2% to 4%. And we have just refinanced, if you will, 1.08%. So, we're gonna save a lot of money on paying this, back this bond. Significant amount for the town, and then we have another 10 years on this bond, so that's worked out very well. Okay. Um, we also have an agreement for professional services. This is with the town of Killenly. We met with the lady that does it for Killenly, also does it for Potnom. And this is for our homeowners. Let's see, oh, she's an independent contractor. But it was for the town of Killenly, and they're gonna be handling our homeowner's loans to folks that wanna borrow from us to do the facade or replace siding on the house, replace storm windows, what have you. And we had a company previously that did that for us, that company chose to not continue the service. We did an RFP, we got a response from Killenly, who also does other neighborhood towns. So, it's, it's good for us, they know what they're doing to be able to handle this, it's good for the citizens of, or residents of Woodstock who wanna borrow from this fund to do improvements to their house. We had a very good meeting with the lady that's gonna be doing this operation for us. Very, very knowledgeable, she's been doing it for a number of years. So, and it's kind of a win-win for everybody concerned.
Can I, can I chime in?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that people are aware that this is not actually a loan from the town of Woodstock. It's actually a small cities housing rehab program. It's a grant that's funded through the state. And you have to have, you know, income requirements to apply, and if people would like to apply, they need to get an application either online or at the selectman's office. And then it will be reviewed by the new consulting firm to see if they qualify. But I just wanted to point that I don't want people to think that all of a sudden the town of Woodstock is giving away loans, because that, that's not it, it's an actual grant program through the state of Connecticut.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, that's all I have from correspondence and announcements, there, there was a bunch. I'd like to go to number 13, public comment, and Megan already had her hand up, so I'm gonna go to her first. Megan?
Oops.
What?
Good, so I just wanna read what I submitted in the chat, and please know, I knew that this would come up under the public comment. The anticipate, the expectation was not that you would address it during your meeting. Just during the Board of Ed meetings, we have people leave comments, kind of rolling comments, until we get to the citizens' comment part. So, the first question was, if the Board of Finance approved it, the WA capital assessment fee for the full amount of what is due on the bill, which is more than 218,000, and also what the Board of Selectmen just did, transferred to CNR for the end-of-year transfers, how can the Board of Select, Board of Selectmen approve it for less?
Well, Mike, Mike Dougherty, if we can, Mike Dougherty is with us also. Mike and I were at a meeting with Rich Roberts and Karen and others earlier this week. And that was one of the things that Mike and I kind of agreed on, because this, again, Megan, we, the town, was assessed X amount of dollars in two equal payments. And all of a sudden, the second payment grew. So, what I'm saying is that for now, we will approve that second equal payment as it was presented to the town. Beyond that is something that we're gonna have to discuss further, not with Board of Ed. But, and Mike, you can chime in, if, you know, if you feel that we are approving the wrong amount, and it was previously approved by the Board of Finance for the full amount.
So, I guess if Mike's not able to answer the, I'm, go back to the procedural question. If the Board of Finance approved it for the amount that's due on the bill, what authority does the Board of Selectmen have to approve it for less?
Did they approve it for the full amount?
Yes, it was not unanimous, but it was for the full amount, and it was also for the full amount that you all just transferred to CNR.
That was true to us.
Are you still with us?
He is, yeah, I'm muting him, and Michael is also unmuted.
Uh, either Rich or Michael, Megan's question, if you heard it, was how can we change what was approved by the Board of Finance for the second payment to the Academy?
Michael, can you hear us? He's unmuted.
I certainly respect and understand the challenges of Zoom, so if Michael and Attorney Roberts wanna get back to me with their answers, that's perfectly acceptable.
I, Megan, I appreciate your patience, but I sort of, you know, you bring the question up now, and since the players, Rich and, and Mike are here, I, I'd kinda like to get an answer now, because if there's some reason we have to go back, Greg and Chan and I are all here, so we could change if it needs to be changed today.
They can type their answer into the chat, if they're not able to.
We don't know if they can hear us. Rich or Mike, if, if you wanna type your answer into the chat, um, you could do so.
Jay, when you met with, with Rich and Mike earlier this week, did, did, did you have the, the bill, the original bill from last year, which they had, the Academy had indicated we could have, we could break it into two equal installments over two fiscal years? Or did you have another bill that they, that they seemed to have brought up, increased?
We, we didn't get a second bill.
Okay, that, but I can answer Megan's, Megan's question, we didn't get a second bill.
Put me on the phone, because I'm calling.
I know you, I know they did, and it doesn't answer my question. I'm going on what the motion was, that was approved by the Board of Finance, I believe it was in June. Um, I mean, I, I apologize, I don't have those minutes up on my computer right now, I wasn't anticipating. I was just popping into this meeting to see what might be happening, I didn't realize that this was on the agenda. So, I did not do my homework before this.
No, 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 don't apologize, but you raised a very good question, I understand. Uh, I'm wondering, Chan and Greg, if, from a procedural situation, I don't wanna table this, because again, this is gonna have to go to Board of Finance in the September meeting. Right? Yeah, and the numbers of the other things, all the numbers were based on each other, that's what the problem is.
So, I guess, leads to my second question. If the Board of Selectmen, now, just read what I wrote, a question for the Board of Selectmen, if this was a discussion between the First Selectman and the Board of Finance Chairman, I thought it was early today, but I guess early this week, why was the Board of Ed not notified? Or why were the Woodstock Public Schools not notified?
We, the, it was an attorney question, we were meeting with him about other things. And I was sitting next, it wasn't about whether or not to go, we were meeting about other issues with the attorney who happened to be in town that day.
I certainly didn't want you to attend the meeting, but in the spirit of cooperation and communication, it would have been, I believe, a responsible thing to do, at the very least, a courtesy thing to do, to let us know.
I agree.
I, I didn't literally just pop into this meeting, I didn't know this was on the agenda. And I also double-checked with Victor and Janice to see if they were aware of it as well. And while I greatly appreciate the support, there's a lot of stuff going on in education right now, a quick call or an email just to make, give us a heads up would be appreciated.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to read Mike's reply. Mike says, the reason we agreed to do it this way was to expedite the transfers. We have yet to determine how the additional amount will be funded.
Did you hear that, Megan?
I did, I can see it on the, in the chat as well.
Oh, all right.
So, if the, we don't know how the additional amount will be funded. And please forgive me, when I did come on earlier, I wasn't paying full attention, to be quite honest with you, until you, I heard Woodstock Academy capital assessment fee. And maybe you can go back to the motion that was made for the end-of-year transfers. Was it for the 218,000 plus, or was it for the 212,483?
212,483.
Okay. And procedurally, this, even though the Board of Finance has approved it and sent it to the Board of Selectmen, and now needs to go back to the Board of Finance under the executive order, because they're the governing body when it comes to financial issues?
Yes.
It's because we wanna get it paid without having to go to the referendum under that executive order, or else this would have to have gone to. So, now, given the, the Board of Selectmen are agreeing with the Board of Finance that this can be approved under executive order to prevent having a town meeting and, and an actual referendum. Because if it goes to referendum and it doesn't pass, then it wouldn't, you wouldn't have any funding from CNR.
I'm just checking on procedurally, because the Board of Finance has already approved it, and they did kick it to the Board of Selectmen?
They only approved it, Megan, to transfer from the general fund to CNR. After that, any CNR, doesn't matter what the amount is, it's a statute, has to go to a town meeting. But then our ordinance would also take precedence, if it's over a hundred thousand, we'd have to go to referendum.
I understand that, but the Board of Finance, the order is giving them, the governing body when it comes to finances?
Yes, the governing body, the legislative body would be the Selectmen, and the budget-making authority is the Board of Finance. So, yes, they will be the final decision whether or not they wanna approve this under executive order without going to town meeting or referendum, so we can actually spend the money.
Okay.
The, the other thing that Mike mentioned was that they had approved the larger amount, if you will, but they weren't sure where we were gonna get that additional money. You know, between the lower amount and the higher amount, and I, I can't, how much is it?
The original, the, the original was 212,483, and it's now a little bit over 218,000, I, I don't have that right.
So, it's six, six, almost seven thousand dollars. But from what Mike said, they approved it, but they weren't sure where that money was gonna come from. Only because prior to, they had planned on the second bill, if you will, being the same as the first one, and it changed. So, that's what he said to me, they weren't sure where they were gonna get that money. Did Rich respond?
Rich, which?
Okay, so.
Yeah, I'm here, what, what specifically was the question, I'm sorry?
Uh, Megan, could you repeat your question, because Rich is now on, he got another phone call.
Sure, I, I just had a chance to find the Board of Finance minutes as well. Um, the question was, if the Board of Finance in June approved to, that a town meeting request of the amount of 218,136 be taken from the CNR account to cover the second and final installment of Woodstock Academy's roof and fuel tank project, and it was approved, although not unanimously, what authority does the Board of Selectmen, and I guess in agreement with the Board of Finance Chairman, to reduce that amount to 212,483?
I guess since the first transfer or appropriation was not acted on, they have the ability to supersede it with a second motion.
But it's not a second motion from the Board of Finance, it's a sec, it's a first motion from the Board of Selectmen. So, the Board of Selectmen can change, I guess, financially or fiscal dollar amounts of the Board of Finance that's already approved?
Well, the, the, acting under the executive orders, you know, you don't go to the town meeting, so what the Board of Finance said should go to the town meeting didn't happen and isn't going to happen. Instead, what it is under, under 7S- Instead, what it is under, under 7S7 is that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance must jointly agree on a transfer or appropriation. And, you know, here, it's starting with the Board of Selectmen saying, "We want to make the appropriation of, of this amount." And it goes to the Board of Finance, which can either agree or disagree with that.
Okay, so this, and under that, I guess, reasoning, then the CNR request for the EMS and WFPA of 69,920 and 72, and 70,000, the Board of Selectmen can change those numbers as well?
I'm confused, Megan, I don't even, I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm actually reading the meeting minutes from the June 9th Board of Finance meeting, when they approved the 218,136.
Yep.
And so that was the original amount that the Board of Finance approved? Right?
I believe so, I don't have the minutes.
But then to the Board of Selectmen to schedule a town meeting, a special town meeting or referendum, or under the executive order, they could make a decision, I guess, to kick it back to the Board of Finance. But I guess where my confusion is lying is, so does the executive order also give the Selectmen, the legislative body, the authority to change the amount approved by the Board of Finance?
It requires that whatever, whatever goes forward has to be agreed upon by both entities. So if the Board of Finance says, "We want to spend $1 million on something", and sends that to Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen say, "We only want to spend 302,000 on something", and they send that back to the Board of Finance, a, at the end of the day, the only way the appropriation can be made is if the, both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance agree on what it is. This is, I mean, unfortunately, it's completely different process from what everyone is used to following, and it's because of the restrictions on holding in-person votes at town meetings. But the, the way appropriations can get made is by having essentially motions, the same approval from both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And, you know, on the, on, on the WA appropriation, the numbers were different. It sounded like on the Lucas ones, the numbers were the same. But if they're not the same, at least, you know, now the Board of Selectmen has, has basically lodged on a number and forwarded it to the Board of Finance for them to act on. Whether they agree with the Board of Selectmen or not, you know, is, is for them to decide on September 8th. But that's how the process has to go now that, or at least for so long as we're prevented from doing the town meetings.
When does the executive order expire?
September 9th, I think, or the 10th, one or the other.
Okay.
The expectation is that it will be extended, and all the executive orders will be renewed, but that's kind of in the works.
Okay, thank you very much, Attorney Roberts.
Sure.
Greg?
Jay, just to clarify this, I, I'm, I'm a little confused too. But it seems to me that the only number that the Board of Selectmen had to work with on this was the 212, because that was one half of, represented one half of the, the, the original bill from the previous year. And then, so where did the 218 come from that the Board of Finance apparently had to work with on the, on, at, and at their June meeting? And how come the Board of Selectmen were not informed of this? If we, if ultimately, we would have to work to tra, transfer the money from the CNR budget to pay for the bill? So where did that bill, where did that 218 hit land to start? That's where I think Megan's question needs to be answered, you know, who had the bill for 218?
That was the second bill that was submitted to the town from the Academy.
Right, I understand that, but where, but, but it was 218, and we never had it, you said, right? We had 212.
At the Board, at the Board of Finance meeting, they approved the 218,136.
I know that, I understand that. My question is, where or who had the bill for 218? Where'd it come from? Came from the Academy?
I believe Academy sends it to the Woodstock Public Schools Board of Ed, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, then nobody sent it to the Board of Selectmen, apparently. Which I think is, is how you explain why we acted, on what we acted on. Is that right?
So we can't do anything until we go through all the numbers. Because everything's going to have to be adjusted.
If, 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 if the amount gets adjusted, then we will have to go back and change all the numbers for the transfers, because the transfers are based on the general government budget surplus. With our expenditures that we were, that we didn't spend this fiscal year. So we, you know, tried to put money faithfully into the accounts based on what you and Mike talked about during the somewhat meeting that we had for the questions with the attorney.
All right.
So that's what these numbers were based on. If it's going to change, I mean, I don't know. I mean, if this goes forward to the Board of Finance as is, they may agree with the Selectmen, and then try to figure out later on where the extra money is going to come from, or they may not agree with the Selectmen and not approve it under executive order. I, I can't speak for them. They, they may not even, they may want to just wait until we can have a referendum to approve it, Megan. I, I really don't know, I can't speak for them.
I, I can tell you that while I may disagree with it being 212, Attorney Roberts answered my question as far as procedurally how it can get done. I can't argue with that if that's the way it's laid out, and that's what's in the executive order. I just wanted to know how and why.
Mike chimed in.
Mike, oh, Mike, go ahead, oh.
Yeah, he said the fact that there was an increase of students should have no effect on the cost of a previous completed project.
So what Mike is referring to is the 218?
Right.
The dollar amount that's based on an increase in Woodstock students to Woodstock Academy, because the fee is assessed per student. And so what he's saying is that it shouldn't have any effect, because the project had already been completed.
The number of students that the Academy gets from Woodstock has nothing to do with the cost of the repairs that they wanted to do. That was a set number from the beginning, and that was the general consensus was that, well, nobody was really happy about having to pay it.
That's exactly right.
Those two numbers, that we, it was two equal payments, that was the agreement, that was the deal, and that's what we voted to pass on.
Exactly right, Chan. So again, again, no, no, nobody's answered my question. Where did the bill not come from, came from the Academy? But how, who had the bill for 218? And, and, and then never went back to the original premise that Chandler just stated, that it was supposed to be two equal payments of 212, you know, not 218, because more students are going. It has nothing to do with that, that's... So I think we're right to approve 212, and, and, and then somebody, somebody can bring that up to the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, or WA, I, you know, but we did the right thing.
No, but now you got me thinking, and Megan's got me thinking too. I'm wondering, Chan and Greg, if we should table number six. We've already voted approve, but I'm, I'm wondering if we should rescind approval and table number six on the agenda? Because all of these, all of these amounts are based on a finite amount of money from last year, and we're looking towards the future. So if that be the case, and this was what Mike said to me earlier this week, the Board of Finance didn't know where they were going to get this extra amount of money between the 212 and the 218. It sounds like, I, I don't know, I'm wondering if we should table number six, the payment from the Academy in the amount that we already agreed to. Rescind our approval, and we're going to have to go back with, with Karen to change all these numbers of these other things. I mean, I'm not sure what to do right now. Who?
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, Rich, I don't know what your thoughts are, or Mike?
Well, I mean, legally, you can do whatever you want. I guess the question is, what, what would you want to accomplish by undoing the appropriation of 212? Have Karen go back to see if there is 218? Or are you stuck on a matter of principle that you told us two years ago that it was going to be, you know, four and a quarter, and we're paying that in two equal halves, regardless of, you know, what kind of new math you're using to tell us that this year it's $6,000 more? So I guess, you know, my, my question for you in response to your question to me is, you know, what, what's the end game that would be achieved by undoing the approval of the 212?
I think the end game, in all honesty, is we're going to have to pay the 218. I don't think Board of Finance knew where that additional amount of money was going to come up to the second thing. And I, going back to what you originally started out with, Rich, I think it was on principle. But I think the end result is, we don't have any choice.
I, I disagree that we don't have a choice, simply because in the, in, in the end, we, we had, as Chandler said, we had an agreement that we would pay half of 425 over two equal years. And it had nothing to do with the number of students, it had to do with the cost of the project, which is completed. So, y, y, you know, I... Somebody's got to go back to find that, this, it's got to be documented somewhere that, that the Board, that the Board of Selectmen agreed to, and that the Academy agreed to let us do that. It's got to be somewhere that that exists, that it was half and half. And this is not half and half, this is more.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't, I'd agree paying, paying more, changing it around. We, we, we did what we were required to do.
All right.
So let me, let me time in for one minute. So, so basically, the original proposal that came out was a capital project that was going to take place within two years, and it was for roofs, and it was for tank removal, and there was a specific price.
Correct.
And that specific price was based on the number of students at the Academy at the time that the project began, and they gave us the quote.
Correct.
We were told by Mr. Sanford that he didn't care how we paid it, as long as we paid it, and he gave the option to, for two, you know, to pay it over two years. So I think everybody was under the impression that the, the price for Woodstock would be over two years, and that would result to two equal payments. And then, when the new year came out, when the increase, which was close to $6,000, was because there was now an increase in students. So yes, the principle of it is, if we had paid the whole amount last year, we would never have seen the $6,000 increase. Because the project cost was based on the students at that time. And I think parties believe that we shouldn't be having to pay more money just because we have new students. That may be fine for future projects, because future projects will be based on the number of students at the time they do the project. I was at the Board of Finance meeting in June, and it was the consensus of the board that they did want to spend the 218,000, because they said that the Board of Ed would have to cover the difference, which would affect students in K through 8. It would be less money that they could contribute to K through 8. So I mean, at this point, if this goes back to the, i, if, if the Selectmen decide to move forward with their proposal of the 212,483, and it goes to the Board of Finance, they may or may not approve that amount. And then we could re, right now, there we are, so...
So I stay with the vote, I don't, I don't, I'm not in favor of changing anything.
So Mike Doherty, our Board of Finance Chair chimed in to say, I would move, I would say to move forward as voted and deal with the additional assessment going forward.
Did you all hear that?
Yes.
Mike Doherty?
I'm, I'm in agreement with Chandler, but, okay?
Oh, no, I, I, I think we're all in agreement. But Megan brings up a very, well, she brought up a, a good point about procedural issues, but I think we're back to the argument that occurred last year, when this first occurred with the second bill, and everybody's saying bad words, you know?
If we had fewer students, was the bill going to go down?
Yes, per student assessment.
Someone else's bill went down.
Confer's bill went down, and I believe Eastford's bill went down.
I'm, I'm standing by the original deal, that's, that's my vote.
And Chan, Greg, you said that also?
Yes, I do.
I'm going to have to go with you guys, and I think we'll go back to, Michael just typed, typed in, to move forward as voted, and we'll have to deal with the additional assessment down the road. Again, we know we're going to have to deal with it, so it's not kicking the can down the road, but... Okay.
One more thing, I just wanted to thank Karen for her explanation in saving me from having to do it. So thank you, Karen.
You're welcome, Megan.
Okay, are we finished on, on that point for now? Okay. Can we go back to, again, citizens' comments? I know Diane, you're with us, and there may be others, but do we have any other public comments? Is there anybody else with us?
No.
Okay, any, any from the board? Yes, Greg?
Quick, quick question, is there any update on the traffic signal project at 169 and 171? From DOT?
Run that by me again.
Is there an update?
No, no, because there was another project at 171 and 169 further up near the common. So I was confused. No, we don't have an update on that, I know what you're talking about. You're talking about down by the Coco's Cottage?
Garden Gate, formerly Garden Gate, Coco's Cottage, that, that, that one, yeah.
No update.
No update, okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
The only thing I wanted to add was, is it possible to, for you two to be in a smaller room? The, the acoustics in that room are terrible when there's nothing in it. And it sounds like you guys are in a tin can, and I've had a hard time following you today. I mean, if Zoom is set up for that room, that's, that's fine. But if you were in a smaller room, I think it'd be much easier to understand.
Yeah, I just...
I'll, I'll, Chan, I'll have to check with, with Crystal, she's the, she's the host and running the electronics. We'll have to check, I'm not sure. We wouldn't have the screen, but that's okay, because if you all had the screen, so you could see us, and as long as, if, if, if Crystal could identify who's speaking, well, I mean, we recognize familiar voices, but if she could identify people, we could probably do that, and still keep, keep distance between the four of us.
It, it's not a, a big deal, it's just a suggestion.
Well, you know, Chan, thanks, because I think this is a consideration, because I don't see this changing anytime soon.
Correct.
So, you know, it's like plan for the future, so, yeah. We, we can all talk about it here on how this might proceed. Okay, anything from anybody, or do I hear a move to adjourn?
Go move.
Thank you, all right, everyone, thank you. Take care.
Take care.
You too, take care.